Okay, it's nine o'clock. Let's call the meeting of the Pennington County Planning Commission to order for May 9, 2016. Roll call, Commissioner Farabee is representing the county board and Commissioner Laurie Litten is not here today. Approval of the April 25, 2016 minutes, did everybody get a chance to read through those? Are there any corrections or additions?
Move for approval as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the April 24, 2016, 25, 2016 minutes. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Madam Chair, obviously I shouldn't be voting because I wasn't part of the minutes.
Okay, would you like to be recorded as an abstention then?
Yes, thank you.
Approval of the agenda. We have, it's a long agenda today, 23 items on the agenda, would anybody like to move approval?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Consent calendar. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for a separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. PJ, will you read the items on the consent calendar into the record, please?
Yeah, there's quite a few. PJ, kind of a director of planning department, item three, conditionally used permit amendment 8936 for Clyde and Deanna Grauman to amend the existing conditionally used permit to allow a roofing business as a home occupation in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditionally used permit amendment 8936 with nine conditions. Item four, conditionally used permit review 0801 for David and Janice Olsson to review a residential care facility in the suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditionally used permit amendment 0801 with six conditions. Item five, conditionally used permit review 0911 for Tyler and Kimberly Richter to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a single-family residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditionally used permit amendment 0911 with the applicant's concurrence. Item six, conditionally used permit review 1406 for Dakota Time LLC. Julie Smorgowitz is the agent to review a recreational resort to allow up to 10 seasonal rental cabins, a man under his residence, a maintenance shop, and a kitchen on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditionally used permit 1406 to the May 23, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item seven, conditionally used permit review 1407 for Josh Bruning to review an illuminated on-premise sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit in a highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 1407 with seven conditions. Item eight, conditionally used permit 1410 for MDC Coast 2 LLC, Conrad's Big Sea Signs is the agent to review two illuminated on-premise signs within 1,500 feet of residential zoning district or dwelling unit in a general commercial district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditionally used permit 1410 with four conditions. Item nine, conditionally used permit review 1414 for Gerald and Barbara Whitler to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a permanent residence in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditionally used permit 1414 with six conditions. Item 10, conditionally used permit review 1538 for Mark and Anna Holbrook to review living in an existing double-wide mobile home while building a single-family residence in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditionally used permit 1538 with nine conditions. Item 11, construction permit review for a road district 1508 for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto for Summer Creek Road District to install a culvert and water line on the north end of Summer Creek Drive, improve portions of Ciskin Loop and Carbon Loop and grade, and maintain other existing roads within the district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit 1508 with 12 conditions. Item 12, construction permit review Summer Creek Inn 1509 for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto for Summer Creek Inn to grade and level an area hillside for lots 10, 11, 12, 13, and 15 in order to construct and build lots 10 and 12 to stockpile material at other locations, lot 27, between lots 34 and 35 on the property, and to level and grade an area for an overflow parking lot on lot 45. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit 1509 with 12 conditions. Number 13, conditionally used permit 1608 for Bytumus Paving, Bill Corkowski, as the agent to allow a temporary asphalt plant and stockpile site for contract work in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of construction permit 1608 with 13 conditions. I'm sorry, conditionally used permit 1608 with 13 conditions. Item 14, conditionally used permit 1609 for Ken Nash to allow for two new off-premise signs within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue conditionally used permit 69 to the May 23, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item 15, rezone 1604 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1604 for Richard and Leanne Jensen to review 21.57 acres, to rezone 21.57 acres from low-density residential district and limited agriculture district to highway service district and to amend the Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from plan unit development sensitive and low-density residential district to highway service district. Staff recommends to continue rezone 1604 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1604 to the May 23, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Item 16, conditionally used permit review 1505 for Beach House LLC. Troy Schmidt is the agent to review a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditionally used permit 1505 with 13 conditions. Item 17, conditionally used permit review 9937 for Bob Young to review a mobile home park in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of construction, conditionally used permit 9937 to the June 13, 2016 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, PJ.
You're welcome.
Would staff like to pull any items?
Item 11 and 12, please.
11 and 12. Would any planning commissioner like to pull any items for further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Item three?
Item three. The others? Would anyone in the audience like, oh, I'm sorry, yes, Commissioner?
Excuse me, is there a quarter?
Pardon me?
Is there a quarter?
No.
Five, nine, 10, 13, and 17.
13 and 17, okay, we may need a lunch break. Would any member of the audience like to pull any of the items that have not already been pulled for further consideration? Okay, Chair would consider a motion to approve the consent calendar pulling items three, five, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 17 for further discussion. Is there a motion?
Would so move?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar with those items that I mentioned being pulled for further discussion. Is there further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. On to item three.
Thank you.
Chutima.
Good morning, Chutima Sabun.
I don't know that, do we need to go through a whole iteration of what this case is about? Or would you like to just ask your?
Well, I'm the one that pulled, I guess I'll kind of state my concern. When this came before, I was concerned on that really this isn't a home occupation. I still have that feeling, but I also felt it was kind of grandfathered in. But, given that, I also feel like when it was originally approved in 89, it did not have that condition about as far as automatic revoked when no longer operate the business or sell the property. And that was added at a later date, so to me that was kind of an added sunsetting clause. And here we have a sunsetting opportunity on something that's not really a home occupation, and I kind of question appropriateness of that. And then kind of related to that, home occupation requires that it'd be, you reside on the site, and I guess my question is, is the son that's proposed to take over the business residing on the site with the family in the same house, or how's that being addressed? That's, I guess, in a nutshell, my concerns.
Okay, let's take those one at a time. The first concern is that in July 1991, a new condition was added to the original conditionally used permit saying that this conditionally used permit be revoked when Clyde and Diane Grauman no longer operate the business and/or sell the property. So, what SIG is saying is that's kind of a sunset clause that's been added, and now if we approve the conditionally used permit as you are recommending, that sunset clause is going away because it's being extended to another person. And that is a concern.
This conditionally used permit has been reviewed and approved since 1989, and I understand your concern that it's going to keep continuing on and on. So, that's why on the, on the condition number two, the amendment, it said in here that the conditionally used permit will be revoked when all three of them no longer operate because they just want to make sure that the son has, business has something for the son future.
Does the son live there?
Um, no.
He does not?
Yep.
Okay, here's part of the concern, if I can just read from section 204, General District Provisions in the zoning ordinance. "A customary home occupation is a gainful occupation or profession conducted by members of the immediate family residing on the premises and no more than one additional employee in residential districts." It goes on to talk about how the home occupation shall be conducted entirely within an enclosed structure and no stock and trade shall be displayed outside the home, or outside the enclosed structure. So, this case doesn't comply with that provision in many ways.
And, I mean, I guess that was my concern when that became up before, but I felt like we weren't changing the conditions. We are changing the conditions now. And so, to me, that kind of is a different review than we did before. I mean, I think I brought it up before that this doesn't fit the definition of home occupation, but it was, it's been going since 89. So, I mean, I was reluctant to vote against it. In fact, I think I may have made the motion to approve it on that one we did before. But again, I did more of a grandfathering, we weren't changing the clauses. Now we are, and we're basically modifying the sunsetting clause that I believe was added in 91. And so, I mean, you're keeping that in there for sunsetting, but it's changed. Now you're adding someone else, you're prolonging this even longer. So like, to me, you're basically giving extension to the sunsetting clause.
So, what would be your recommendation?
And I guess, I mean, I, you know, I have a hard time when the business has been in one spot, but, you know, like I said, it really doesn't fit our definition, especially in the suburban residential area.
I suppose it could be, if we chose to, we could take Daniel Grauman's name off of this condition and just allow Mr. Clyde Grauman to still be owner of the business.
The purpose of the amendment was to add Daniel Grauman.
Right, and I'm hearing at least from SIG that we've, he feels that's inappropriate for the definition of a home occupation. The applicant is here. Yes, please.
What we're looking for in this amendment is an extension so that if in an untimely death of both myself and my wife, that he would have a place to conduct business until he would be able to find some place to conduct his business in a timely manner. So that, okay, let's say that we both die next week. He's going to be out next week, and he's going to have to find a commercial property to rent in a week's time. We're looking forward to extend that so that he, he's got some time to go and find him, because I don't think he'll want to be there at that business site once I, we either pass away or move out of there.
Well, I think that if you look at condition, condition number nine, it says this conditionally used permit shall be reviewed in five years, so that would give him plenty of time.
We're not looking to move out either. We're looking at an untimely event that he's got some time to where he can, he doesn't have to move out immediately.
Right, so basically what I'm saying is if you had an accident and died tomorrow, it would be five more years before this comes up for a review.
Oh, okay, I see what you're, I see what you're saying, okay. So, then we're supposed to leave this as it is then?
Well, we feel, at least I feel, a little bit uncomfortable about setting this precedent of allowing someone who does not reside on the premises to conduct a business that is then really not a home occupation. You see what our issue is?
Okay.
Yes.
I guess like, and I guess I wouldn't be opposed to maybe, because like if, if it's a month before the five years and the next review and something happens, you know, then, then you may not have the timing. I wouldn't be opposed to us adding a clause where a six-month window or something like that to allow that transition. But I mean, for the things I've, you know, brought up before and like as Karen kind of reiterated too, is, my concern is it's, it's setting a wrong precedent. We've got a later agenda item where we're sticking to the ordinance, this is one, only one other employee that's non-family, and, you know, as it is right now, it's six. I'd rather say, we don't change it, you know, and like I said, I was comfortable with letting it go forward as it was.
Okay.
And now that we're changing it, I guess, I don't, I would be open if we could write in somehow where there's a six-month window should untimely occur for a transition. I don't know if that's-
Upon the five-year review then?
Well, five-year review, or, or, like, and, well, I don't know if it's automatically revoked or just revoked, and then it wouldn't be revoked till reviewed. I'm not sure what's the procedural on there, but anyway, I'd be open to, you know, putting some type of clause in there, whether six months is adequate, or, you know, if nine months, I, given that, as long as this business has been there, I'm reluctant to be too hard on, but when there's an opportunity to, you know, in a sunsetting kind of provision in there, then I'd want to get that so we can get in line with our ordinances.
So, would you propose adding a clause to condition nine? Or an additional sentence?
I'm looking for some guidance from staff as far as how we could word that.
So, you're looking then to?
Add a provision where like, you know, should something happen, we allow a, I don't know, what do you feel is appropriate, six months, nine months, a year?
A year, a year to two years is what I was thinking originally when I came up with this, you know, thought for.
I guess I, I wouldn't be comfortable maybe over a year, to me that gives you time to, you know.
So, with the clause then, are you wanting it to state something along the lines of after that grace period, then the all?
And it does say right now automatically revoked, so I mean, I guess, with that given, you know, should there be a situation that comes up that we allow a one month, or one year moratorium essentially for?
Once Clyde or Diane no longer own it, for the home occupation to be removed from the premises, is that kind of what you're thinking?
Right.
Okay. Trying to think if there's a way that we can reword condition number two, to kind of put that in there.
Is there any urgency in this matter?
Not at this moment, no.
I'd move to continue this item to the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue conditionally used permit amendment CU 8936 to the May 23 Planning Commission meeting. Is there further discussion?
The purpose being to let the staff discuss and things that were brought up and come back with another proposal.
I think that's appropriate.
We do have a long agenda at the next meeting, but I don't think this will take much time.
Yeah, we have a provision, I think.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are continued until the May 23 meeting. On to item number five.
Morning, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Were there questions on item five?
I believe Commissioner Farabee had a question.
Yes, I, I do, it says the, on page, whatever this page is, 1 of 5 of CU 0911, says 48.77 Yet, on page five, it talks about these folks got an operating permit. And I guess I'd, I'd appreciate an explanation as to why, why they needed an operating permit.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor. The legal description says tract B of the north half. So, it is platted.
Okay, so because it's platted, it requires an operating permit? Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
That's the, that's the sole reason.
Is that the sole reason?
Are you asking about the exemption, is that your concern? That it's over the 40 acres unplatted?
My question was that the sole reason?
The lot is platted, it's tract B, so it doesn't meet the requirements of that exemption section.
Great, thank you.
My question was a yes or no question, and so the question was, that was, yes, that was the sole reason?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, staff has recommended to end conditionally used permits CU 0911 with the applicant's concurrence. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to end conditionally used permit CU 09-11 with the applicant's concurrence. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. On to item nine.
So, what was the specific concern about item nine?
Commissioner?
Nothing to do with this, these particular folks. This was a good time to talk about why, why, over all these years, however many years it has been, why do you have to get a CUP for a single-wide mobile home?
I believe that would be an appropriate conversation outside of the conditionally used permit report, maybe an item of discussion later in the meeting. That's more of a philosophy one, not one specific to this, sounds like.
Madam Chair, if I might, the reason I bring it up is I understand now that there is a bundle of changes going forward to the planning and zoning ordinance. So, I totally disagree that this is an appropriate time to talk about whether or not this should be an inclusion.
I think what he's, what he's asking though is not to, not discuss it today, but to move it to item 22, items for membership, because it isn't, doesn't pertain to the specific conditionally used permit.
If, if that's the chair's wish, that's fine, as long as, as we-
Okay, let's do that, let's move it to the item 22.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And that's your, that's why you wanted to pull that item?
Yes.
Okay. So, staff has recommended?
Approval of the extension of conditionally used permit 1414 with six conditions.
Is there a motion, please?
Don't move.
Don't move.
We have two motioners, do we have one second?
I'll second.
Okay, all right, it's been moved and seconded to, to approve extension of conditionally used permit 1414 with six conditions recommended by staff. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to commend staff because in number six of the conditions reviewed on a complaint basis only, that is a step forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Landers, I appreciate that as well. We won't see these so often. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. On to item 10.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes.
This is on page, three of six, about halfway down, says the subject property is exempted from obtaining an onsite wastewater operating permit because it is a 40-acre unplatted parcel and zoned as limited ag.
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions. First, this is precisely 40 acres and not 39.9, or?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a 40-acre section?
This is, it's 40 acres plus, it's not 39.5, or?
Correct, it's 40 acres.
Looks, looks like in the diagram, looks like Old Folsom Road goes through the corner of the property, or is, is that it to scale representation?
Where's the?
The legal description is the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter, which is a 40-acre-
40-acre.
...description.
I think the Commissioner's point though is if there's right-of-way that goes through their highway right-of-way.
It should say less right-of-way in the legal description.
If there were, if that were an issue for this size, but the legal description doesn't say that, so it is then clearly totally 40 acres, as far as you know.
Yes, it has a legal description of the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter.
Okay, does that answer your question?
In part, like I say, the, obviously that map isn't to, isn't to scale. What you're representing there is the road goes through that, that 40. On to the next question, it says parcel. Where in the zoning ordinance is it, do you find the word parcel?
Can you repeat the question again?
What I read previously, it said unplatted parcel. Can you tell me where in the planning and zoning ordinance you find the word parcel?
PJ?
Oh, I'm just up here, I believe borderline harassment, so I'm just going to stand here. I believe we had this question answered before, at a previous meeting.
I think we did, I think it was answered that it was a standard dictionary definition of the word.
Commissioner Landers actually brought it up, and I believe Commissioner McComb had answered it. And also, the zoning ordinance allows for standard and acceptable definitions that are not, to be accepted, that are not in our zoning ordinance. That paragraph is in our zoning ordinance.
Right, so the standard definary-
Where do I find that?
Dictionary definition.
Should be right in the beginning of the definitions.
Okay.
Unless specifically defined below, words used in these zoning ordinances are to be understood in their ordinary sense, except as they may be defined in general South Dakota State law 2-14.
Okay, so standard dictionary definition applies there?
Was there a reason for your question, Commissioner Farabee?
I don't believe you're in order, and did I hear that you used the word borderline harassment?
Yes, sir.
Did I hear that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I believe he's out of order, and I believe that was an inappropriate comment. Thank you, and I'm done with item ten. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, questions are answered. Staff has recommended approval of the extension of conditional use permits, CU- fifteen-thirty-eight, with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
I would so move.
I'll second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extension of conditional use permit, CU- fifteen-dash-thirty-eight, with nine conditions recommended by staff. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to item eleven.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, again, Water Protection Coordinator. The reason I pulled items eleven and twelve is I received a phone call this morning from the applicant, and he would like condition seven and eight removed, because he's going to add that to his PUD when he applies for it, and he would like to just keep condition six as far as the increase of construction activity. At this time, the development is not going to go out farther before this construction permit will expire, so he was concerned that he would be required to put these in before his development would get done. So he was asking to remove items seven and eight, or condition seven and eight. Excuse me.
From eleven or twelve?
From both. They're both the same.
They're the same?
Yes. So it would actually be the extension of construction permit fifteen-oh-eight with ten conditions instead of twelve?
Okay.
Because as part of, he's going to do some other stormwater management during his construction, and this is going to be included during his development in his PUD.
Okay, are there questions?
Sorry, that's confusing.
I guess my question is, number seven, there isn't a time limit on when that has to be done. It just says it has to be done, doesn't it?
Yeah.
It says implemented by December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Oh, yeah.
And then this construction permit would expire on April thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. So his concern was that if the development didn't happen in that timeframe, then he would be required to put these in before the development.
I was looking at the wrong place.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we're talking about check dams, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And that would be part of the stormwater control, once the site is completely developed, out all of the lots that are in that subdivision. So...
What kind of an extension is he wanting?
Well, it will actually be a condition of his PUD, so when he does his PUD, which he's applied for. So you will be seeing that.
He has applied for it?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, evangelists have applied for the PUD for most of their lots. It'll be going in first meeting in June.
Okay, so if we eliminate numbers seven and eight right now, they will come back again in the PUD?
Correct.
Okay. I think I lost my mic.
I just lost, yep.
I think I might have touched something over here.
Oh.
Accidentally.
The mics are dead.
Yeah, they're all dead. Oop, back again.
Yeah, okay. So for item eleven, I would like to recommend approval of the extension of construction permit with ten conditions, removing condition seven and eight.
Okay, are there further questions? Chair would entertain a motion?
I'd move approval per staff's recommendations for, you want to handle them singly, since probably appropriate to handle them singly, so...
Yes, please.
Of, uh, agenda item eleven, per staff's recommendation with ten conditions, seven and eight removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extension of construction permit, CU- fifteen-dash-oh-eight, with ten conditions, condition seven and eight removed. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to item twelve.
And then item twelve is also for the same subdivision. This is just for the Summer Creek Inn portion and not the Road District. Same conditions to be removed.
Would move approval of, per staff's recommendations, with ten conditions, removing item seven and eight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the extension of construction permit, CU- fifteen-dash-oh-eight, with ten conditions, item seven and eight being removed. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. On to item thirteen.
Item thirteen was a conditional use permit for a temporary asphalt hot-mix plant.
Madam Chair, I...
Yes, sir.
Reading through here on page three of six, it says, "Implementation of best management practices are required as indicated in section five-oh-seven-A of the zoning What's specific? Well, number one, who decides what BMPs are, and where do I find them in five-oh-seven-A?
Sure, in five-oh-seven-A, in the very beginning of it, it actually makes reference to our stormwater quality manual, and our stormwater quality manual lists best management practices that can be used for land disturbances.
And who decides what best management practices are?
The contractor. As long as they are implemented and they are meeting the requirements, you know, stabilization and controlling runoff, they can use whatever works for their site. We don't dictate specific ones. We let them utilize what ones that they feel will work best in their situation. That's pretty typical across the state for practices.
Okay, and you do go out and check that they're meeting those eventually?
Yes, typically we just look for surface erosion, tracking, things like that, yes.
And then on the flip side of that, if I'm a contractor, and these folks are, by telling us paving or whatever, on the flip side, if somebody from the government shows up and they don't think I'm following these guidelines, then what's the consequence?
They either, they have a certain timeline, they actually have that timeline in the...
That wasn't my question. My question was, is, I'm thinking that I'm following these, and obviously they're not going to be precise guidelines, I wouldn't think, but I think I'm doing the best job possible, and along comes a government agent and says, well, no, you're not. So then I gotta bow to your wishes, right? Thank you.
If I could have just addressed this situation for a minute...
Sure, could you identify yourself for the record?
Paul Krakowski from By Two Minutes Paving.
Thank you.
What, the way we've got this site planned, we'll do all of our stripping to the south and to the east. The land naturally flows in that direction. What we'll do is we'll leave that earth stripping around the perimeter, so it'll naturally create a check dam at the basin of this flow. That'll evaporate, and if it doesn't evaporate, we can get rid of that water easily enough. But then after completion of the project, we put all of that topsoil back on, replant it. If you were to go out to the site right now, and it's been used several times, it's in really, really nice shape, and we would leave it in the same condition.
Okay.
I think we've got a pretty good track record in there.
Thank you. Mr. Krakowski, are there questions for him?
And once again, my point is that the contractor is basically at the mercy of the government, unless things are laid out precisely. What you just described to me would certainly seem adequate, but you're still at the mercy of the government.
Well, if an official came out and said that they wanted silk fence or something like that, it's something that we would comply with. You know, we don't argue very often.
And there was a fellow that, a number of years ago, said that the eight scariest words in the English language. I'm here for the government, and I'm here to help, and that guy was my hero, President Ronald Reagan. Thank you.
I think Commissioner Farabee's intent is to protect the contractor, you know, by providing specifics rather than these general terms.
I believe, well, actually, if we do that, that puts the contractors in a certain box, and they don't like being that. When we go out and meet with them, we discuss things and different options, things that would work for them, things that they have on-site, things that they can do. We typically talk about options, I guess, is the way that we've approached it in the past.
I've been on-site visits, not in this county, but in other places, where the government representative goes with the contractor and they examine the site, and if there are problems, if there's erosion, despite the control measures that are happening at the contractor's choice, as the contractor's choice, then they'll discuss how to, you know, what might be a better way to manage erosion. So, you know, it's got to be a give and take between both, just to protect both the contractor and the environment. That would be my answer.
Yes, and that's what we do. And that's why they are required to do weekly inspections and after-storm events, so they can look at their site and they know what's working and what's not, and they can fix those as they go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Krakowski. Are there further comments on item thirteen? Staff has recommended approval of conditional use permit sixteen-oh-eight with thirteen conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve conditional use permit sixteen-oh-eight with thirteen conditions as recommended by staff. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to item seventeen.
My concern there, Madam Chair, is page seven of eight would talk about Rapid City Public Works regarding onsite wastewater treatment systems. Who's in charge? Is the city in charge or the county in charge?
Madam Chair, are you referring to the septic systems, or what are you referring to?
Referring to the, it says there are twenty-two onsite wastewater treatment systems in total on the subject property, including a large mound system. Who's in charge, the county or the city?
Madam Chair, this property is located in the Rapid City One Mile Septic Jurisdiction, so it would be under the Rapid City Public Works.
Yep. We've dealt with this property many times before.
Yeah.
I always feel like I own this property or something.
Yeah.
So, to your knowledge, they have operating permits?
I have spoken with Jesse Reeve from the city. He has stated that he is comfortable. They just recently installed a large mound system, and they have an agreement for pump, in regards to pumping.
So, the city, does the city have operating permits?
Yes.
So these are all permitted systems? Yes.
According to Jesse, yes.
Okay.
So what do you do? You have a double permit? I mean, does the property owner get issued a permit from the city and from the county? How's that work?
Just from the city, I believe.
For an operating permit?
Yeah, in this particular instance, yeah.
Well, the septic systems are in the one mile, so they get their operating permits, and everything septic-related issued from the city.
From the city, okay. So that's who's in charge then?
Of the septic system, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The rest of my questioning had to do with, are these really individual, small individual onsite wastewater treatment systems, or are they more commercial? Now, let me finish before you respond. In talking with the individual in peer that's been doing this for about thirty years, he, his opinion is that, that he's the one that should be regulating and overseeing commercial establishments, and just because there's twenty-two individuals, that doesn't take away the commercial nature of this situation. Thank you.
Madam Chair, those would be questions that would be more appropriate for Jesse in Public Works, since this is in the Rapid City One Mile Septic Jurisdiction.
Do you know, does anybody know, this large mound system, how many homes does it serve? Do you have any idea?
I don't know.
That would be a question for Mr. Reeve.
Madam Chair, if I might have a follow-up. If we're going to be issuing conditional use permit, or whatever we're issuing, then we're not going to be complete, we're just going to do a partial job, is that it?
I'm sorry, I missed that last part of your question.
This is a conditional use permit, and we're only going to do parts of it, we're not going to look at the entire situation. Thank you.
Staff recommends to continue review of this conditional use permit to the June thirteenth Planning Commission meeting, with the applicant's concurrence. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue this review of conditional use permit, CU-ninety-nine-dash-thirty-seven, to the June thirteenth, two thousand sixteen Planning Commission meeting. Bob Young, back again. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to item eighteen.
Item eighteen is planned unit development sixteen-oh-one. This is not an amendment, this is a fresh, brand-new rezone. To rezone fifty-five point two-six acres from limited agriculture district and general agriculture district to a planned unit development. The applicants are Donald and Lyle Hartshorn, who are in the audience today. Again, the size of the property is fifty-five point two-six acres. The current land use is residential, some vacant property, and also agricultural use. There's a number of uses that the applicants would like to have on their property, some actually they're doing at, now, that would require a conditional use permit. But having a planned unit development would actually allow those multiple uses without multiple individual conditional use permits, so that's why they chose to go this route. Some of those uses, actually, I'll read them in for the record, that they're proposing, are weddings and wedding receptions, indoor and outdoor, a small chapel, which I just saw pictures of it, which is basically a shed with a porch on it, birthday parties, including bounce houses, reunions, picnics, small gatherings, bonfire parties, farmers' markets, pumpkin patches, corn maze, sunflower farm and maze, wagon rides, pony rides, indoor-outdoor riding arena, rodeos, school tours, horse stabling, pasturing of cattle, bulls, calves, and other livestock, on-premise signs, single-family residence and outbuildings, and single-family, single-wide mobile home to be used as a ranchhand residence. The applicant does not have immediate plan for implementation of all of these, but they have a five-to-ten-year plan. In an effort to maintain the residential and agriculture character of the subject property, we're proposing this as an overlay district, so that the agricultural underlying provisions still apply, and would allow then for all these additional uses that they're asking for, so they don't have to do separate conditional use permits for every one. Once those uses are no longer on the property, then it would revert back to its original zoning and lot configuration. The existing property, as stated, is fifty-five point two-six acres. It's located within the Rapid City's planning jurisdiction. Part of the property is within the city's septic jurisdiction. There's no flood hazard on the property. Access is off of a sixty-six-foot wide dedicated access easement. The future land use for the entire property is limited agriculture, but right now it's actually a split of general agriculture and limited agriculture districts. Surrounding properties, it's really hard to see, well, on the screen I'm looking at, but more so, it's easier on the ones you're looking at. It's surrounded by planned unit development, which is the light blue, which the commissioners can see, and there's just, there's a little over eight hundred acres of planned unit development right within the vicinity. Those include Happy Holiday Campgrounds, which is actually adjacent to the property, Hart Ranch, which has multiple PUD amendments, and a seven-bedroom lodging establishment, which was through PUD ninety-three-oh-four. There's highway service, which include Reptile Gardens, Independence Hall, and various other tourism attractions. There's also suburban residential, limited agriculture, and general agriculture districts. Some of the history of the property, they've been back and forth, what you see as limited agriculture now, that dark green, actually started off as suburban residential, and it was rezoned to limited agriculture. They wanted to do a couple of different things on the property, but didn't take those routes originally, but the existing zoning still stands. We did notice through the review on the property that there was a building that appeared to be unpermitted, it was eleven-by-nineteen shed, which was, Department of Equalization shows was put on there in about two thousand and two. The applicant says that she will get a building permit for that, and it is also included as one of the conditions. There is an additional single-wide on the property, which is right up in, right here, right up where the property kind of dips down to the south. It's a single-wide mobile home, which is currently used... Um, it's a single-wide mobile home, which is currently used as, well, it's a single-wide mobile home, also used as a ranchhand residence, which would, would require a conditional use permit. Um, when that was put on the property in two thousand and thirteen, it was put on with only a building permit. Again, another violation on the property, which this PUD is looking to correct. Parking, well, let's go over what you guys are looking at right now. What you're looking at is the subject property, and as you can see, as the, the approaches off of the, the left side, which comes off the highway, and then there's a, um, a, like a frontage road that runs parallel to the highway, and then they take their approach in. What they're proposing is that they have mostly one-way roads. Um, there was a comment made by the fire coordinator about the width of the road. The applicants have said that they would actually improve the roads to eighteen feet wide with a four-inch gravel surface, and if we actually look at a more current picture, you can kind of see there is some sort of existing road system already in place, and they would just look to, to improve that. So, if you follow the arrows, uh, the individuals would come in, they would drive on a one-way road down to the parking area, and then proceed up to what they proposed, I believe, a hundred and forty-plus by one hundred, um, structure for the farmer's market, for weddings, for whatever the applicant would want to use it for. And then the people, then they would proceed out on the parking, parking area. Excuse me. Um, looking at our zoning ordinance, there isn't anything that directly regulates this. However, um, the director is allowed to use some subjectivity in coming up with, um, the proper parking area, parking requirements. And there is a commercial recreational use, which requires one per five customers computed on the basis of maximum service capacity at any one time, plus one additional space for every two people regularly employed on the premises. This was kind of the catch-all that's been used over the years. The applicant has indicated that will not exceed a hundred and fifty people at any one time for any one event. Um, with that, and with the employees, we're looking at thirty-one parking spaces. However, if you tack on the farmer's market, which she is planning on having thirty people there, that's an immediate known thirty vehicles that are going to be there. So, you have, so we are adding that on, in addition to it, and so we're coming up with sixty-one vehicles. The applicant is proposing anywhere between sixty-seven and seventy vehicle parking space, so she, her request is actually exceeding what we would come up with. Um, in addition to that, she's, uh, looking to do an indoor-outdoor arena further to the southeast of the property. Uh, when you can see, there's kind of a two-way road, which would be eighteen feet with a four-inch gravel surface. There is an outdoor arena currently on that location, which you can see here a little bit clearer in the, in the picture. Um, but she would also, what we're also proposing is a parking area there to accommodate the same number of vehicles. Reason being is because, uh, those trailers are usually double or two-and-a-half times the size of a regular car, and maybe two times the size of a, of a CUV, so allowing them room to move and maneuver around. So, specifics about the uses, we're on page, uh, eight oh fifteen, item X. Um, the applicant does not anticipate all the uses to be year-round, and many, many are seasonal and confined to specific months of the year. Um, item XB is the year-round uses. Those would be the weddings, wedding receptions, the chapel for occasional weddings, funerals and services, birthday parties, reunions, picnics, bonfire picnics, small gatherings, wagon rides, pony rides, and the list goes on. Um, for item XC, uh, if for May through October, those will be the only months of the farmer's market. Item D, September through October, for the pumpkin patch, corn maze, and sunflower garden and maze. And in this picture, you can kind of see, if you look towards the center, a little corn maze in there, so this is an easy way to find out, easy way to get out of the corn maze. And item E, for November to April, that would be the indoor/outdoor riding arena and the rodeos. Um, the request for comment was sent around to the different departments. An item of note came up from the county fire coordinator, uh, mainly concerned about the traffic off of the highway, uh, the addition, the additional traffic off of the highway. Um, also, didn't put it in writing, but was also concerned about an evacuation plan. Um, he was also the Denny, sorry, uh, fire coordinator was also concerned about the interior roadway, as I previously stated during this presentation, and the applicant is more than agreeing to improve those interior roadways, and also meet with, uh, the fire coordinator and come up with an evacuation plan when and if necessary. Um, cit- the city of Rapid City Public Works was concerned about the traffic safety coming off the highway, and also the emergency, um, emergency routes out. South Dakota Department of Transportation, we spoke with her, she actually sent an email, um, to the staff that originally sent this out for a request for comment, and what she wanted was more information. She wasn't saying yes, she wasn't saying no. After that email was sent out, actually staff had met with her, um, for, um, additional items and brought this, this item up. She said she didn't have a problem with it, but again, we don't have that in writing, and she's on vacation, and she won't be back until the eleventh, so we don't have anything affirmative from her. What she did speak mostly about was about the, the three access points coming off of the highway. Um, they're going to, they're slated to be closed, um, in the future, could be fifteen, twenty, thirty years. And then, if you, uh, further down the road, where the larger intersection is, where the turn lanes are, they're gonna re, they're gonna improve that and put some traffic lights in. Um, trying to see if I put one in here that had those. So, this location, this access, this approach right here, this one here, and this one here, DOT is planning on closing. And this intersection further down is the one that they're looking to improve.
Is that Neck, Neck Oak Road?
Yeah.
And, and Spring Creek?
Yep. So, if you're looking at, uh, if, going down the road, this is heading, heading down, this is the first approach for the applicant. This is the one that they would take into the, could take into the property. Then there's also the one further down the road here. As you can see, there's no turning lanes. The applicant herself will tell you that if there's someone behind you, don't take those. Go further down the road until you come to the turn lanes. It's a much safer intersection, and you can turn right or left. There's turn lanes coming from both directions.
So, when does a stoplight go in?
It could be anywhere between fifteen and thirty years. Depends on when DOT does it. So, it's just information we were told.
Two months after somebody gets killed.
Yeah, well, just kind of, if it's ten to twenty years, I remember, ten years ago, Catherine and sixteen, that was supposed to be done within five years, and that was ten years ago, and I, I think we're still fifteen, twenty years before they do anything there.
Right. Okay, continue.
Sure.
Sorry.
Um, with the PUD, which we don't actually see too many from creation, uh, there are some considerations for the planning, uh, commissioners to consider. Um, appropriate relationship to the surrounding area. Uh, the surrounding properties are primarily used for tourism, agriculture, and residential, and, um, it seems to be appropriate for the area. The provisions for internal streets, the applicant is looking to improve that, those roadways from eighteen feet to, with a four-inch gravel surface, and to mitigate, um, truck trackout, especially during the rodeos. Uh, the functional open space, the parcel is fifty-five point four acres, and from what the applicant has planned, she's got plenty of room, and she's not even utilizing the entire property. Um, as far as privacy, if it becomes an issue, uh, staff would recommend the applicant provide landscape screening on the property as needed. However, with the existing use and the history of the property, we do not have any complaints from neighbors. Provisions for pedestrian traffic, we do not foresee, foresee any pedestrians that would require sidewalks. Uh, building types, there are currently two residents on the property, a detached garage, and several farm utility buil- buildings, barns and sedge, which are concurrent in appearance, and they appear well-maintained, and the applicant is, um, aware that she would need building permits, um, for any additional structures. Um, provisions for adequate water and sewer, um, portion of this property is more than, a, a significant portion of this property is within Rapid City one-mile. Right now, her septic and her sewer is, um, adequate, and she is current. As far as drinking water, which was another item that came up with, from, um, the fire coordinator, she is planning on using bottled water, um, for the, in the immediate future. If she is going to, um, not build separate bathrooms for her guests, but she's not planning to, she would have, be required to have one porta potty for every fifty guests on property. So, we're looking at, um, at least a minimum of three on the property. It, um, as far as analysis goes, it appears the applicant has already utilized some property in a similar manner, manner as proposed, and we have not received any complaints. The planning department has received, again, no complaints relative to the subject property. Uh, the majority of the surrounding area is highway service, which caters to tourism and vacation travel style uses. We're not looking to rezone this to highway service. It does not, um, have a direct connection to a highway, so therefore we would not, uh, ask that this, this become highway service. Therefore, uh, staff recommends approval of planned unit development sixteen oh one with twenty-nine conditions, even though it says twenty-eight in the staff report on page thirteen.
Thank you, PJ. Are there questions?
Uh, I have a question.
Yes, Jim.
Um, you know, my only concern about this thing is the traffic, and I, I think that's a huge potential impediment, depending on how much traffic they get, of course. Seems like it's an appropriate use for that area, but, um, what, what's the record, or do you know, about, uh, safety at that point? I mean, under current conditions, you know?
I don't know about that point. I know a little bit further down the road, around where the pearly pit is, but not this far down. The applicant, who lives there, may be able to
Oh, okay.
speak better to that. We tried to get a hold of Stacy, get something in writing. Again, she was on vacation. Reached out to her supervisor, hadn't hear back from him either.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that to me, uh, is really almost unconscionable, the way that intersection is designed and, you know, operated. So, yeah, okay.
Sig.
Sure. Um, in, in a lot of ways, I think it's a great idea. When my kids were younger, attended some pumpkin patch events in different places in different states and all that, and I'm almost wondering if they're underestimating the attendance. Uh, I, I've, I've been in, seen situations like that, where you literally have hundreds of people, and like, uh, even like the rodeos, uh, I was at the barrel event at the county facility this weekend, and it was just barrel running only, and there were more than a hundred and fifty people there, and I mean, like, no one pulls a single horse trailer anymore. It's four-horse trailer that's got a built-in camper on the fifth wheel, you know,
Right.
on duallys, and, you know, long bed pickup, you know. Uh, you know, so I mean, parking could be a little bit of hassle. I think there's a lot of good things here. Uh, water, I guess, you know, a little bit concerned, you know, providing water bottles, is that providing it, uh, free, or is that they're selling water?
You have to ask the applicant.
Uh, well, uh,
I know.
that's the concern I have. I mean, if you don't have water there, uh, and you have to buy it, uh, you know, you're kind of forcing them in a situation, then, you know, if there's food preparation, which with wedding and some of the other, you know, things that are listed, picnics.
Wedding, she would have it catered, she had mentioned.
Well, but still, I mean, there's still food, hand washing, uh, you know, are you gonna have adequate hand, you know, portable hand, uh, water for hand washing, food preparation, things like that. So, I, I like the idea. I, I do have some concerns, and traffic is a big one, because they're turning left out of a fast lane, somebody coming down the hill, uh, you know, in a heavy tourist area that's not used to people all of a sudden turning right in front of you, uh, when you're, you know, in a left turn, left lane without a, you know, a, basically a left turn lane there. I'd hate to see that approach even open. Uh, that's, but, uh, I, uh, some concerns I have at the same time, I think it's, uh, you know, I think it'd be a great facility to have something like that for kids and entertainment and tourists, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Barb.
You know, I have to agree with Sig. I, I just love the idea of this. I think it's, I think it would be an asset. But, uh, one of the questions that I have is, you stated at the beginning, uh, PJ, that this was a commercial use, and, and you're putting it under a PUD. But, if I go to the section on PUDs, in general description, the very first item, it says the intent of the planned unit development is to allow districts and which ingenuity, imagination, and design efforts on the part of the builders, architects, site planners, and developers can produce a desirable residential development. This is in no way a residential development. This is a commercial operation, and I think that the whole idea of creating a PUD is inappropriate.
Okay.
What page did you find it on?
Seventy-three of the zoning ordinance.
Right.
Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, why restrict weekday operations to one day a week?
That was her request. She would only operate one day a week, between Monday and Friday, and then Saturdays and Sundays. She doesn't know which day between Monday and Friday that would be.
Okay, so that's her preference?
Correct.
Um, also, in
Similar question. Was that the applicant's request on six PM? That seems overly restrictive to
Correct. Ten to six, I believe.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, in your, uh, discussion, you refer to this, um, PUD request to be considered as an overlay district, and I know we don't have that, uh, defined in our ordinance. Um, is that something that's coming with, uh, potential amendments to the zoning ordinance?
It's a common practice within the planning field, and it's been done several times, um, by this commission and the board of commissioners over the last, I mean, since ninety-four. I mean, it's been done several times.
So, we've got some precedent for this?
Huge amount of precedents for this.
Okay, great. Glad to hear that.
You can, you can provide particulars as to where we have overlay districts?
Not right at this minute, but if you put an official request in, I'd be happy to.
I, I have, I have, since you brought up the overlay district, I did look that up, and I'm glad to hear there's some precedent, but in no way does this fit the common definitions of an overlay district. And I have a few pages printed out here. Um, additional or stricter standards and criteria. Um, the standards of overlay zone apply in addition to those of the underlying zoning. And then down here, and this is, you know, easily available on the internet in multiple places, to supplement or supersede existing regulations, usually provide a higher level of regulation than required by the existing zoning classification, also permit exceptions or required less active guidelines. And I could go on with some other comments, but this seems more an effort to circumvent the zoning that's there, rather than go to commercial, which is what this is.
But they, they do want to, uh, continue to operate this as, in, with, using agricultural uses, which is what their zoning is.
The most important thing is that they maintain the ag use on that property. That is
Right.
the primary use, and they do have, there are partially taxed as ag, so it's not a commercial property in the, the sense of what you're saying. And this is something that's a little bit different and out of the ordinary.
Well, it, it doesn't fit. It doesn't fit in any way. It doesn't fit in PUD, and it doesn't fit in, uh, what you would call the standard definitions of an overlay.
And that definition of an overlay, which you looked up, is not in our ordinance. Is that correct?
I didn't look up one.
You just said you looked it up on the line.
Yes, but you said in, uh, for a previous case, that we use standard definitions.
Correct.
This doesn't fit.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Landers. However, that's not the way that this commission or the board has voted in the last few years.
Well, maybe that needs to change, because, because the zoning laws need to mean something, and we're not in the business of looking for ways to circumvent the zoning. I want to see this project go forward. I think it's a very nice project, but we need to be even-handed in application of written law.
Yep.
Brittany, did you find something about overlay districts? Do we, have we defined this in our ordinance?
No, we haven't defined one, but there is a PUD overlay on the, um, Ruth Ann Jensen property, member, that has similar, it has weddings and accessory rentals.
Where's that one located?
Nemo.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
That's a PUD overlay also.
Yep. Okay, so there is precedent.
Madam Chair, I guess I have
Yes.
Uh, as far as, uh, how's it taxed? If the underlying district is ag, so it gets taxed at an egg, and even though it's, could be a fairly profitable money-making organization way above what an egg property would generate?
That'd be a good question for Department of Equalization.
Kinsley, girl, with the state's attorney's office, they have three prongs, and two of the three have to be met based upon the acreage, the income, and, um, so that's, things like that, that's all, separate.
Okay.
It's all handled by equalization?
Yep.
They figure it out?
Yep. And I could pull up the parcel report if you'd like to see it. It, only a portion of it is taxes ag.
Okay.
So, the motive here is not to minimize taxes on the part of the applicant, is that?
Not speaking on behalf of the applicant, but she's never mentioned that. If anything, if anything, it was to offer things for families and children. I mean, really, that's pretty much our underlying principle.
Second point, um, the PUDs, have we, haven't we had PUDs who have had mixed usage, where there's residential and some commercial?
Yes, essentially, that's what PUDs do.
Many.
So, that's a common practice.
Yeah, the
With this, yes. Here in Pennington County, it is, yeah.
Right, okay.
PUDs are used for the creative purposes, the things that don't exactly fit with our ordinance.
I just wanted to clarify that. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, but not for a single residence. This is, you know, the way it's stated in here is that produce a desirable residential developments. That's not what this is.
Sig.
Well, that's what, the ones that I can recall were PUDs were primarily residential, and this is primarily not residential.
Primarily agriculture, with residential houses on it, one for the landowner and one for the ranchhand residents.
Like I said, I'm not opposed to this. I think it's a good concept. I like the idea, you know, just...
Would you prefer to see a different zoning?
I'm, I assume staff believe this is the more, most appropriate way to do it.
Given the history, the way things have been done, and the way the boards have voted, and the opinions that have been given out by the board, yes. I agree with Commissioner Landers. PUDs were not meant for this. However, that's the way it's evolved through the decisions that have been made through the board over the years.
Also, in Section 213, PUDs, Section B4 says that resort developments where there will be no sale of individual lots shall be considered as a planned unit development. The commission may waive any portion of this section which is not appropriate to resort development and may require any additional information necessary to determine compatibility of the proposal. So, that allows a huge amount of leeway for us. Okay, would the applicant like to speak? Is there anything you'd like to add to the discussion?
Good morning.
Please come forward. Are you Donna?
I am Donna.
Hartshorn?
And my husband Lyle. I guess I'm just kind of lost for words at the moment. We were, just been approached many, many times. Can we have a birthday party? Can we have our wedding here? Can we, but we're not wanting a big thing. I mean, obviously, Lyle and I can't do more than two things at one time out there. I mean, this is a lot of work. It was a fun thing for our family, is what it started out to be. And that's what we want to continue to be, but now we want to have a party and a wedding.
Okay. Are there any questions?
And we've had an indoor arena for 30 years down in Custer County. And so, it's not a weekly event. It is, like, the roping club would come maybe like once a month. There maybe was like six team ropings. Not a lot of public comes to a team roping. It's not like we have a full rodeo. It's, and we have high school kids, and we have younger ones that will be coming up, and that will be for them further down when they get a little older.
Okay.
And obviously, that indoor arena costs a lot of money, so it'll be a while.
Right, gotcha. Sig, did you have a question?
Well, and I guess, I know, you know, maybe in the short term, you can't handle more than that. But I mean, you're kind of looking at five to 10-year plan, as I understand it, and looking out.
For the arena, yes.
Well, and some of the other things that were listed, like the farmer's market, it lists up to 30 vendors. And I'm looking at, you got 30 vendors, you probably got two people per vendor average running that in a farmer's market, so you got 60 people right there. I mean, even the farmer's market on Omaha, when they have that, I'll bet there's more than 150 people that stop there.
Maybe I am too low. I don't know.
You know, in some ways, I think you have a good idea. I'm just saying, you may be underestimating the demand.
You may be more popular than you think.
Well, then let's up it.
Well, and like, well, like I said, I happen to be at that, the barrel running thing. They had 220 enters, and that was not a full rodeo, it's just the barrel running.
And that is right.
And so, I mean, those events can get fairly big fairly quick, and I think that's a great place to have it. I am concerned on the traffic.
Well, those turn-in lanes are wonderful. I don't know, I mean, I know all of you have been down Highway 16, but to go to Happy Holiday, I'm sure you haven't. But if you've been into Reptile Gardens, if you're coming down the hill, they have those turn-in lanes to go across to Reptile Gardens, and they have them to come across to Shipwreck Lee's or to the Happy Holiday. And we did not have a problem last summer with those turn-in lanes. I use them myself. The traffic coming down the hill, I mean, you can see what's behind you, and you just use those turn-in lanes.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Mrs. Hartshorn?
Well, my concern on the traffic, though, is like, if you're turning left and you're, there's no room to stack. You know, if somebody's in that turning lane and waiting for cross-traffic, you know, there's no room to stack, and they're going to stack on the highway.
Well...
Yeah, if they're turning there, but if those other approaches are in use, unless those are blocked off. And, you know, maybe that's one of the suggestions, is that the ones that are outside the turning lane don't get used.
Well, and, yeah, I don't know more than two, because we have, like Lyle and I have used, so one behind the other one have, went to that turning lane and used. And so, obviously, two vehicles do fit there that I know of, because we've used it.
I guess I was thinking about the, the turning, the approaches further to the east, if somebody's using those.
Where there are no turn lanes.
If somebody, they're...
Okay, now that one, okay, that is true. That is the very first way, the one north. And if somebody is behind me, no, we do not use it. You have to go down to the next...
You're assuming that everybody thinks like you do.
Maybe. Well, and that's right. But our main entrance is down at the second one, and that's where the main road is into there.
And there, is there a turning lane?
Sure of that.
Yes, there is a turning lane there. If you look down where it says Happy Holiday, see, there's a turning lane there, and it goes across. That is our road in there.
Possibly the...
Right.
Someone could get the state to put in a no-left-turn sign at those two...
Good idea.
...exits and alleviate that problem. It would have to be big enough so people could see it, but...
Make everybody go down to the turning lanes.
Nobody turns left on, across.
Oh, you mean this very first one, yeah. Well, and that is not a real good, you don't see that one anyway. It's almost like you pass it because you're looking, if you look where the mobile homes are, we are to the east of that.
Right.
And it's, okay, so there you go. You see the mound? So, when you're coming down that hill, you see out to that field first. So, you see the corn, the pumpkin house, you see all of that first when you're coming down the lane. So, you actually miss that first turn. And then when you get to the second one, there is a turning lane. There's no signs like right there, I mean, if they are, that's way back in the field.
Right.
Yeah, and that's what you're looking at. So, you miss it when you go by, when you go down to the second one to the turning lane, and you turn in.
And are you going to have a, you are going to have a sign, right? Is there going to be a sign on the highway?
No, I don't have a, Fort Hayes allowed me to put up a billboard last year that it's just a rap that we were able to use.
Right, gotcha. Okay.
Oh, yeah, we have those funny little signs, and they're in the field.
I'm trying to get there, okay. There is a, there is a property between theirs and the highway, and there's kind of starts here, so is this where your sign is? Is this the hay bales?
Yep, our hay bales go along that edge there.
They put their signage here, so we're...
Oh, yeah, you can see them on there, too.
Yep, so, whoops, too far. So, if the highway is in the top-left corner, their advertisement is about where the black is on the, for the one-way road. That's where they can advertise, because they don't own the property to the left, to the west. So, it'll have to be on-premise sign.
So, on the end of the mound, we just have these hay bales, and they're painted orange, and it says Pumpkin Patch. And then we feed them to the cattle the rest of the year.
Right, gotcha. Are there any more questions?
Yeah, maybe more of a statement on the traffic. And I just, I think we all locally, no one tourist sees them hits, he drives more carefully, you know, and, but it was my dad driving, bless his soul, he would turn. And he saw an approach, he would turn, you know. You know, and I think that's what happens when you, with tourists that aren't familiar with the area. They don't know that there's a turn lane coming up, so they take the first opportunity to try to turn. And then, you know, you have a Suburban, you can barely hang a Suburban in the middle there while you're waiting to turn.
Well, that first road up at the top is not the main road in there. That is like a private drive. So, when you do turn in, you have to come down that little service road to the next driveway into there.
Well, that's my concern. Tourists don't know that.
Oh, and that's, and that is right. But like I said, if you're coming down the hill, you generally will miss, because you don't even see it. It's not very visible.
Yeah, but it just takes one.
And that is right. I'm not denying that.
You know, I don't know if DOT would be willing to do that, but I mean, I think a great solution would be no-left-turn.
And that's right. I mean, they should be able to put a no-left-turn there. I don't think it would be a big thing for them.
Well, it's a simple solution.
Yeah.
Another thing in terms of the water available in some of the facilities that you mentioned, you know, the market may actually discipline the applicant. If you have a wedding and you don't have sufficient facilities, the word will soon get out that don't go there, because they don't have sufficient water, and they don't have this, and they don't have that. So, to an extent, I think those things will become a kind of self-correcting, if that's the case. So, I, I agree with you. It seems to me a little marginal in terms of significant wedding venue, but, you know, I don't think, the real danger to me is this road, and I don't think that's something that's going to get fixed for the next several decades, I guess. Unless someone's going to put in, you know, a thousand-room hotel there, then probably the city would do something, or the state would do something. But I don't know that there's much we can do, other than Bill's suggestion on the left-turn is certainly a good idea.
EJ.
Again, just a reminder, this is treated just like a rezone. So, what you have is a recommendation to the board, and it still has two more hearings. And DOT, Stacy's supposed to be back in the next couple of days, so hopefully we'll hear from her then. However, that would, if you were to move to recommend approval on it, it would be without the answers you're seeking. So, maybe if we can draft some type of, I'd hate to see it continued, but if we can draft some type of condition in there that satisfies you. So, it can go, because it still has at least another month of hearings, minimum.
And maybe we should up the amount of people. I mean, that's really good, you guys thinking positive.
You'd want to do that now, not later.
Yes, then let's do it now.
Madam Chair, I'm back on the PUD designation, and I looked at the item that you cited, the resort developments. And there's no definition of resort in our book either. So, I don't know what they mean by resort, and I don't have that, access to that right now. So, I still don't think this fits, because what's in my mind as a resort, without looking for a specific definition, this doesn't fit. It's a business, and it's commercial. And I hope it's, in some way, it's able to go forward. I just don't like this way.
Would anybody like to make a recommendation for additional conditions on this PUD?
Madam Chair.
It's a rezone, you can't.
It's a PUD.
PUD, it's treated like a...
So, we can, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The applicant is actually requesting if we can up the maximum number of daily guests to 300, based on, based on conversation, which would then increase the size of the required parking area to 91. Want to round it out, or you want to do 9,500? It's up to you.
No.
So, that would, that could possibly change, that would change condition number two and condition number eight.
91 parking spaces?
Correct.
And how about, we'd have to have six porta-potties then also, is that? Oh, that's...
Yeah, there's a lot of conditions to go through here.
Yeah. Does anybody see an additional correction? I don't.
Porta-potties are covered under number 21.
Right, with no numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And what was the total parking?
91.
91. So, it'd be 91 for the parking space to the southwest, and I think we still keep with that 67...
At the arena.
For the indoor/outdoor arena when it gets built to the southeast, because that's still separate, unless you're looking for 300 people to come to a rodeo.
No, I do not.
Yeah. Is there further discussion on this item?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner?
Has anybody checked with Rapid City to see how many years down the road before this will be annexed?
No, and that did not come back in their comments either. Three different, three different individuals, staff members in Rapid City were questioned and didn't come back as a comment.
Madam Chair, I think they're in transition now, so it's difficult to get information from them, because they have no director.
One item came from planning, two came from public works. The only, the only big concern they had is the future possible roadway that would go through the property, the future development, look at that.
Just so everybody knows, Rapid City is all the way down to the top of the hill...
Right.
On the east side.
Yeah, they, that's true.
And Rapid City use is quite different, according to this.
Their land use?
Yeah.
Future land use?
Yeah.
My only reasons for raising the issue is this three-mile plating area, and then, of course, even worse, one annexation, but how many folks have, in that three-mile area, been jerked around by both the city and the county? And obviously, the city could come along, and whatever we, the county, agreed to, the city could, could alter that. It's definitely in the three-mile plating area. So, need to be keeping that in mind.
Always. In the three-mile, there's always potential for disagreement, although we're working on that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I do have another question for the applicant. Item 12 on the 6:00 PM, my gut feeling on that, that was overly restrictive, but you're fine with that?
Well, the, like, the farmer's market, I think it should close like at 6:00 in the evening. I mean, I just use that. And that I don't really know either, so maybe I should make that later.
I didn't know, like, if you had a pumpkin patch event, and you know, you had some ho-down show next to it or something like that.
Right, so we should maybe go to 10:00, because then, you know, in the summertime, it is light until...
It is.
9:30, 10:00. But I don't want to work after 10:00 at night.
I don't blame you.
I don't want to work in the dark, and I don't want to work when it's cold.
And I don't know if I'd push it to 10, but I mean, like, you know, even 8:00 or 9:00.
Well, I would say 10:00. I mean, I don't, because I just don't want to be there after 10.
Would you consider doing evening weddings?
Yes.
Okay, then we need to alter that condition, for sure.
You're right, so it should be. I was thinking of that for the farmer's market, but I didn't think of that being included in that, so yes.
10:00?
10:00.
And you really are okay with only one day between Monday and Friday?
No, you can change that, too. I mean, you guys are giving me...
It's like six weeks of discussion going out the window.
I was thinking a lot less. I mean, we kind of like our freedom, but, you know, we, I don't know, it's fun to just drive around the pumpkin patch and not have to work all those days, but maybe it will be that. I don't know. So, yes, put in more days.
Got an idea how many?
Let's go for seven. Then I can just pick the days I want to work, and I don't have to work.
Okay.
That be all right? That be all right?
Yep.
Where is that condition?
Madam Chair, there are so many changes here. I really think this needs to be continued and reworked.
Anybody else?
It seems to me it would be constructive to move it on to the next stage. And then we could, if, you know, it's almost like continuing it. And if this, this is an endorsement of a beginning and nothing more than that.
Commissioner Farabee will see it again. Twice.
Yeah. So, I mean, I understand Barb's concerns and I, I agree. But I think if we moved it on, this is, since it's going to be reviewed and seen repeatedly here, I think it's.
Would be appropriate.
You know, and I encourage you to come out. I'd be glad to give you a tour.
Well, let me, let me run down the changes that I think I've heard and let's all, you know, make sure we understanding, we're understanding what we're going to be voting on. The PUD, item number two has changed the number of guests be limited up to a maximum of 300 at any one time. Item eight, that both parking lots, or that the, which is at the west parking lot, be large enough for a minimum of 91 parking spaces. And the arena parking lot be large enough for a minimum of 67 parking spaces. That would be the amendment there. Item number 11, days of operation, seven days a week.
And the hours?
And the hours will be from 10 to 10 PM. Item 12, any music being provided for any activities be shut down by 10 PM.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Probably PJ a question. I know we've had some other venues that had music. Do you, did we limit that till 10 or do you know off the top of your head without researching?
I think they vary depending on location.
I think we've limited Brulee to 10 PM, didn't we?
Okay.
10 has been done.
Okay.
Yeah, and the one at Nemo, I think was 10 also. And I believe that all the rest of the conditions would stand as written. Any more questions for the applicant?
I guess I question why we even have 11 if we're going to take seven days a week and.
10 to 10?
Yeah. We're going to do seven days a week.
Maybe we just need hours of operation. So, well, I don't know. I guess I would leave it in, seven days a week, 10 to 10.
You can leave it because, you know, I mean, they're all a seasonal thing. No season, I mean, every season will be different. Yeah, so.
Right.
That's just covering my week.
The commissioners will also want to know.
Yeah.
What their, what limits they're putting on, which aren't many on that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Item 27, I guess I'm not sure how that, if there's a farmer's market and you have 30 vendors, are they considered part of the operation that you definitely have more than one additional family member operating that is? Is that considered?
That's a really good point.
I saw that earlier and I think that's a good point.
I guess it would depend on who the operator is, is the landowner who oversees the 30.
That's why I'm asking staff's guidance on who's the operator.
The way we looked at it was Donna Lyle and their son.
Will operate the farmer's market.
Well, they're like the oversight, they're the foreman, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
And they'll be renting spaces, is that right?
To the vendors.
Yes.
Are you okay with that then?
But, but when you have a wedding, does that imply that they only have these three people conduct, putting on a wedding? Even if there's a catering group there?
No, we would hire somebody to cater.
Yeah, you would, but you wouldn't need anyone other than the caters to take care of that and then the three of you to deal with whatever else might be involved?
Perhaps it would be better to change number 27 to that the operation be conducted by members of the family residing on the premises and as necessary, event staff. Or no more than one additional person plus event staff. I don't know. What do you guys think, staff?
I don't know. I mean, even when we look at like home occupations, it's, you know, by the people that live there, the family members, but we don't restrict that they can't have a number of employees.
Well, we did on the roofing.
Well, that one, that one's a little different. I mean, that's around five years before the zoning ordinance changed too. But, but that wording, if, I mean, if.
If we added plus event staff as necessary?
Thank you.
How about just dropping the condition, period? Why is the condition even there?
Well, to some extent, it, I guess so, you can't move an army in there or something, but.
You don't have 12 different.
Or an outside entity coming by it.
Number one, you want them to predict the future, which they can't. Number two, who's going to enforce it? So why even have it in there?
But I do think it implies a concern about some discipline and order to the development, you know? If we simply leave everything open-ended, we could make that argument on a lot of these things, which I don't think would be particularly constructive, so.
My concern is staff changes, commissions change, you know, what's the interpretation that going to be down the road? You know, who's the operator? I mean, you're saying you just, you view that as basically general managers and then, you know, other people that come on board. It may be viewed later that any employee that's there. And I mean, if it gets to be a successful operation, any, you know, could easily have more than three employees.
That's why we try to be as specific as possible.
And I would think, you know, the hope would be that you'd be successful.
Thank you.
And if you're, you're going to have 300 people, you may need more than three people to oversee the operation.
Yeah.
So I, I, to me, that may be too limiting, but I'm, you know, especially if you're looking down the road.
Have we even defined what the operation is?
Yeah.
It's, there's a whole list of things that, and they're all operation, basically, so.
Lots of possible.
Me take it out, but.
And, and we're tying it almost to home occupation requirement.
Right.
And this isn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not sure, like, we're, our, the one we were just talking, where Brulee place, I can't think of the name of that resort.
High Country.
Do we have a limitation there on how many people can be operating on that one? I'm not sure there is. To me, I'd almost see this as the same as that, that kind of operation.
Why exactly did you not seek some kind of commercial operation? You said it's because you want to grow a pumpkin patch. Why would that be outlawed by a commercial operation?
Well, most of the area down there is highway service and for, and for tourists. And there's no commercial in that general area. And we didn't feel, or staff didn't feel, that commercial was a proper zoning for this or highway service a proper zoning for this. So given, again, the decisions that have been made by this body and the, and the board, this request in this format is consistent with the decisions that have been made.
Why was highway service rejected? Could you explain?
As I stated earlier, it doesn't, it doesn't touch highway. She doesn't have her own access to the highway. She has an easement, but it goes across somebody else's property.
And also she wants to do ag.
Yeah.
Primary, the primary thing on here is ag and they want to maintain that. That is the primary concern.
Yeah, I appreciate Barb's frustration with this, but I think it's a pretty creative use of the PUD and I don't see, I don't see a problem with it myself, but.
So back to condition number 27, what do we want to do with that?
I think we should just add a necessary event staff. I like that. It's kind of open-ended. It implies that individual events may be different. You know, in one case you may have one employee, another you may have three.
Would that satisfy you, Sig?
I'm, I'm almost leaning towards George's comment.
Take it out completely?
Yeah, because I, I think we are almost tying to home occupation. And I mean, if it's successful and you have a bunch of employees to maintain the property and spruce it up a little bit like that.
But, but are you going to take out the, just take out the part about the members of the family residing? I mean, I like the idea that they're going to be involved in this and, you know, and you're simply going to give them the option of hiring whomever they need to do.
And again, I'm looking maybe, you know, 10, 10 years down the road, if this is successful, they may not reside on the property.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate that. But that seems to me that would give it, somebody in the future to have an opportunity to look at this perhaps and change some other things too, quite frankly. I, I like the idea that this, we are treating it sort of as a home occupation in a sense and.
I'd be comfortable with listing and resort or event staff as necessary or whatever.
Yeah. That would be my suggestion and.
Somebody like to make a motion?
We could change it next time, you know? Or the commission could.
Are there any more questions for either PJ or Mrs. Harchorn?
What was the decision on 27?
We haven't made one yet, I believe. We're waiting for a motion.
Okay, I would move that we add families residing on the premises and necessary event staff.
27 would read that the operation be conducted by members of the family residing on the premises and event staff as necessary?
Is that a form of motion? I mean, are we in the motion already or where are we at?
We're, actually, we're still, this was a motion to.
We just changed the condition.
Oh, to change the condition, okay. So that was a recommendation to change the condition. So we would add that to the changes already enumerated.
Okay. With that, I'd.
Okay.
Move approval of Jerry can figure all that out, so.
Okay, is there a second?
Did I make a motion?
No, Sig made a motion, didn't you?
Yeah. Oh, okay, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve planned unit development PUD 16-01 with 29 conditions. Condition number two amended to, instead of 150, 300 people. Condition number eight, the west parking lot be 91 parking spaces, the arena parking lot 67. Condition number 11, seven days a week, 10 to 10. Condition number 12, music shut down by 10. And condition 27, adding the, actually changing the condition to that the operation be conducted by members of the family residing on the premises and event staff as necessary. Is there further discussion? Wow, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Commissioner Landers is a no. Motion carries on to item 19.
Well, thank you for being so positive. I mean, this is really good. It makes you feel better yet.
Thank you, Mrs. Harchorn.
Thank you.
County Board report.
Item 19, County Board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commissioner's recommendation from April 25, 2016, Planning Commission meeting, with the exceptions as follows. Number one, the appeal of conditional use permit review 1423 for Keystone Adventures. Andrew Bussie is the agent to review golf driving range in Hella Pad in a highway service zoning district in accordance with section 210 and 510 of the Pennington County zoning district. The Board of Commissioners sustained the Planning Commission's decision to approve the extension of the conditional use permit. Item two, appeal of conditional use permit 1605 for Spring Creek Hideaway LLC, Brent and Pam Vernick, sorry, probably butchered that last name, to allow for a vacation home rental in a general agriculture district in accordance with sections 205, 319, and 510 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The Board of Commissioners approved the request to continue this item to the May 17 Board of Commissioners meeting. And item three, the second reading of rezone 1603 and comprehensive plan amendment 1602 for Mitch Morris was continued to the May 17 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Any questions there?
So why were those continued?
Which ones? The number two?
Second, the second one. Yeah, the one on Spring Creek Hideaway.
That was a request by Mr. Vernick. He wasn't able to be here at the May 3 Board of Commissioners meeting. He lives in Platt, so he wasn't able to be here.
And the third one, what was the reason?
The third one, the, the director from the board was for myself, Mr. Morris, and representative from the trap club to meet. Actually, Mr. Morris and a member of the trap, two members of the trap club met the day before the three of us got together. During that meeting, still didn't come to a conclusion. There wasn't any good answer of how to mitigate sound from shotguns, whether it be buildings or distance, or they couldn't come up with anything. So what the members of Trap Club wanted to do was go back to their board and possibly look at either other locations or buying some of the property to the north of their current property. But they needed time to do that, which then pushed everything.
Right, okay.
Thank you, PJ.
You're welcome.
Items from the public? Oh, that's Commissioner Farabee's wife.
Carol.
Carol, okay. Item 21, items from the staff, building permit report.
The April 2016 building permit report in front of you. Items and notes, single-family residences are down considerably, almost 51, over 51% over this year last time. Number, item 434 for residential additions, which are like covered porches, decks, and finished basements. Those are up over 100% over this time last year. One item that we wanted to bring to your attention is item 328 and 437. 328 for other non-residential additions, for some reason, it disappeared from track it. So we weren't able to put things into that category. So staff determined we put those into 437, non-residential additions for the time being. The staff over in Rapid City did correct the problem, but then it went away shortly after that. So basically, a lot of what you see in 437 belongs in 328. So that's why those numbers are off compared to last year.
Okay.
Nothing further on that one.
Okay, any questions on the building report? Thank you. Planning staff certified in erosion and sediment control measures.
Aside from myself and Brittany, TJ Adorff attended the DOT's training for erosion and sediment control and he passed his exam.
Okay, congratulations to TJ.
And then one other item I wrote down on here is just a reminder that next Planning Commission meeting, you'll hear the vacation home rental ordinance for the first time.
Yep, bring snacks. It's going to be a long meeting. 22, items from the membership, single-wide mobile homes in, uh, CUPs for single-wide mobile homes.
Since we're in the process of changing the planning and zoning ordinance and a bundle of changes, unless there's some reason, rational reason for requiring a CUP, I'd like to see that eliminated.
We're looking for the exact page in the ordinance right now, Commissioner. There is a 20 by 20 limit that the commissioners have put on in the zoning ordinance that states the minimum dimension of any single-family residence shall be 20 feet by 20 feet. We would be more than happy to change that, but that was put in there for a reason a long time ago. That is on page 29 of the zoning ordinance under section 204, I, four.
Bring it up for discussion. Do any of you at this point see any reason for that restriction?
Absolutely not, especially in ag areas. That's, that's common.
Yeah, I.
And a case in point, just about a year or so ago, there were two different rush jobs way the hell out east in the middle of nowhere for CUP.
Right.
And, and really had to push the issue to get them, because of winter and et cetera, et cetera. You know, the people, these are real people. You know, this is in the classroom someplace.
They need a place to live.
So, so those were two, and it just had to be two of them at the same time, the middle of winter. What's this in here for? If there's a reason, fine.
I would recommend.
But I hate arbitrary. I just hate arbitrary.
I, I agree with Commissioner Farabee and I, I think we should encourage the staff to include that change in whatever amendments are coming up.
It's actually part of our master list of changes. It's one staff has questioned considerably. However, we, with the history, from what we understand it, it was put in there to restrict a number of single wides. We're pretty much the only place in the area that really accepts them. And as far as land values and things like that, that's why that was put in there. And this 20 by 20 does not only apply to single-wide mobile homes. It's actually applicable to garages when people want to do living quarters up there. So I wouldn't want to take the 20 by 20 out, but possibly allow the single wides in as a, as an exception. But again, that would be a discussion for this commission and the board.
And that's a good transition to the other item that's always bothered me is why do you have to have a principal residence before you have other buildings on a property? It just makes no sense. Illustration, if you're going to build your own place, or even if you're not going to build your own place, you go buy some acreage, you're going to put up a building to put your stuff in, or your house is being built. It just, it's just a no-brainer to me. You know, if there's a logical reason to come up with it, but I sure can't see one. And especially a person, somebody building his own, own house. Why would he put his tools, his material? That come, get on his knees and ask for a conditional use permit for a, a building prior to a principal residence? It just makes no sense.
And Commissioner Farabee, you make a great point. And there are exceptions in that under 204B for, for primary uses. And we do use that considerably on properties.
Sig, you had a comment?
Well, kind of piggyback. It's one of my pet peeves. I brought it up numerous times. But it just baffles me that for duplex, you have to give conditional use permit. We're really going to revoke a, and have somebody tear down a $200,000 house, you know, just.
No, but you're going to monitor it. Monitor the conditions. You're allowing it under condition. conditions.
But, but why monitor that any more than a residence?
Well, eventually, remember, that goes away. I mean, if, there are residents that are probably behave worse than some people that reside in duplexes. I would, we've experienced that. But again, the ultimate goal that this staff has with conditional use permits is for that applicant to meet those conditions after the trial period and eventually go to complaint only. We have moved a lot of our conditional use permits to complaint only because in staff's opinion and with the history of the property, they've earned it. It's not just handed out.
But in theory, you could revoke it. And then what are they supposed to do?
On complaint, it would come up for review.
That's not going to happen.
But you're not going to tear it down, yeah.
No.
Or force them to convert it into a single family dwelling.
Or they convert it into four, which eventually we'd find out through DOE, so.
Okay, does anybody have further comments? Item 23 is adjournment. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Oh, no, no, wait. I, I got, that was the zoning ordinance changes that I, is everybody kind of on board with at least the staff looking at including those two changes in the, in the, in the bundle of changes?
I'm not sure I'm in favor of having single wides in, in suburban residential, but pretty much everywhere else. What does everybody else think?
I'm probably kind of same as you are. I'd rather see a square footage maybe than eliminating it, but I mean, the square footage of a house in a suburban residential.
Staff can look into it absolutely, but cannot give a, what the conclusion will be after a review.
Yeah, I, I think with discussion here that we'll wait and see what comes up.
And for leaving that, we're going to get some examples of overlay districts. You mentioned Jensen. Are there other examples of overlay district? Can you, next meeting I'm up with a couple of those?
We can do that. And, and towards what direction would you like us to do that review? Or just a flat number of how many? Or is there going to be a discussion to follow?
Well, since you ask, I guess I would like to know how many there are and, and probably where they are.
And, and I would like to know why they are.
Then I would recommend that we not do it to the next meeting. Staff is not going to have time to get all that done.
Plus, we have a huge agenda and vacation home rentals at our next meeting. Could we do it the first meeting in June?
I'd possibly push it to June.
Or maybe the second meeting in June?
First meeting in June is going to be big too, so.
Is that okay with you guys? Second meeting in June?
Good.
Okay.
I, I would like to get additional information on overlay districts, whether it's, you know, even a tool that we should be looking at more often.
Yeah. I agree.
Nice tool to have because once that use is gone and it reverts back to what it was originally and there's no fuss, there's no extra permits, it's just, you don't have to rezonate, it automatically goes back to that. So it saves them time and money.
Well, the problem I have with overlay district, there's 187 pages and I don't know, is it defined in here in your place? And, and if, if we're going to use, the staff is going to use a tool that's not been provided for them, then I guess that's, as a starting point, that's a no-no. But it should be authorized, you're using it as a tool, that's what you're telling me. That's what you're telling us, that you're using it as a tool.
I haven't said that. You said that, Commissioner.
Would you agree that that's, you're using it as a tool?
I would agree. And the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners have agreed to use that tool as, staff has. I mean...
So, so where is that decision from the Board of Commissioners or Planning Commission memorialized? Somebody's head?
I would say through the approvals of the PUDs presented that way.
Once again, you have 187 pages. You think something of that significance would be in here?
Another thing to add to the list.
It's a huge list. Well...
TJ, it may be a, a good idea to just make up a resolution and send it through the county commission to just say, this is a tool that we have used in the past and such and such, and just get a formal, formal approval of it and be done with it.
Oh, I think that's a good idea because it's currently being used.
Well, if, if it's, if it's standard practice and just get it approved.
And, and clarify these definitions.
Not to be argumentative, but if it's so common usage, then why I haven't, I've only heard that term used one time and that was about five or six years ago.
Why, I use it all the time.
I think everybody knows I've been to a meeting or two.
A common use in our profession.
Yeah.
Once again, this is the authority for Pennington County.
But that can be amended by the county commission at any time.
Right.
And often is.
That's why I say do a, do an ordinance amendment and get it approved through this. And so then it, it's official.
Works for me.
I guess I'll close with this. I don't, I certainly don't want this, this county to become any more of a, any closer to a reality free zone than it already is. Thanks for that expression, Sig. I, I like that.
You did that.
Reality has a liberal bias though.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Anything else? All right, Chair, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Thank you.